Kristi Miller, did you see the bald eagle on the lake earlier?
I saw just something swoop by, but I didn't realize it was an eagle.
Yeah, there was a bald eagle cruising around about fifteen minutes ago.
Oh, nice. Did it stop somewhere or land, or just?
Uh, it snapped into position and kept going.
Okay, oh, cool. Yeah, I remember several years ago, I don't know if you were in the house, in your house, I don't think you were. But I was sick, home with the flu, and I was on the couch, and a friend called and said, did you see the plane that landed on the lake? I was like, what plane? And I was joking in the bathroom, but it was apparently landed right on the ice, so.
I was there for that.
You remember?
Yeah, I was there for that.
Did you come out on the ice to in emergency capacity, or?
Yep.
I saw just something swoop by, but I didn't realize it was an eagle.
Yeah, there was a bald eagle cruising around about fifteen minutes ago.
So I just heard the conversation Chris and I just had about the bald eagle, a few minutes replayed. Did you guys hear that?
Okay, we're live.
Live, okay.
All right.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Uh, this is the community council of school district forty-six. Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, we are holding this remotely due to the pandemic that is currently affecting the world. Uh, so I need a call to order and a roll call.
Weedman?
Hi.
Matt?
You remember?
Here.
Brayden?
Did you come out on the ice?
Here. LaCroy?
Here.
I saw something swoop by, but I didn't realize.
So I'm having, did you just call my?
We're gonna have to have, uh, Mark mute. I can't, I can't hear anybody.
I just heard the conversation Chris and I just had about the bald eagle. It's, oh, it's, what I hear is loop of the bald eagle conversation. A little disconcerting, I'm like.
Mark, Mark, you can mute yourself. It's coming from Mark. Mark needs to mute himself.
Nash?
No, but there's, there's more.
There you go. There you go, it's muted.
Strack?
Here.
Perfect. Okay, before we go, before we go any further, I feel like we need to just make sure that everything's okay with our streaming. Because it does seem like that story was repeating.
It was getting, it was getting backed up. It was getting replayed through Mark, probably just in whatever delay there was.
No, but I mean, I heard it twice.
It looped, yeah.
So I'm wondering, Mark, can you just confirm for us that, um, the streaming is now moving forward as it should be? Before we go any further?
Yes, it is, uh, going forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. They will continue. I just didn't want us to get caught with the meeting and find out where the problem. Okay.
Okay, so as long as Mark is on mute, we won't hear it again. Uh, all right, so we, I have established the quorum. Uh, we'll skip the pledge of allegiance again. Uh, so I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
So I'm wondering, Mark, can you just confirm for us that the streaming is now?
Aye, but I'm hearing the loop again. Are you guys do?
Yeah, you need to.
Yes, it is, uh, going forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. They will continue. I just didn't want us to get caught with the meeting and find out where the problem.
Jack?
Hi.
As long as Mark is on mute, we won't hear it again.
Hi.
Uh, all right, so we have established the quorum. Uh, we'll skip the pledge of allegiance again. Did you say Weedman?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
LaCroy?
Hi.
Nash?
Hi.
Mark, we're still having a problem where we are hearing, um, a review of our conversation through work.
Yeah, Mark needs to keep his on mute.
Right.
Mark, can you, are you able to mute me?
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm muted.
You're not.
I'll keep working on it.
We can hear you, and therefore you are not muted. Well, for all of our friends out in YouTube land who are watching this, we assure you we're trying very hard to get a smooth meeting through you.
Okay, so let's see if we can keep going here. Um, next is, uh, public comments. Uh, for anybody who is, uh, watching online for our board meeting. Uh, you can, uh, type in your public comments, uh, as we go along here, and we'll try and answer them at the end of the meeting. For the other, uh, area of public comments, and, uh, we'll try and address those better. Uh, next is board reports. Anybody have any board reports?
Yeah, I ha- I have one. Does anyone else want to go first?
Go ahead, Kristi.
Okay, so first just wanted to thank Mary. Um, she's given me kind of the tutorial on finance in the last few weeks. And it's been really nice to get my head around some of the financial stuff. And so, Mary, thank you. I appreciate that. And just your commitment to transparency is contagious. Um, so again, thank you. And, um, as I've been doing quite a bit of reading and attending some webinars that I thought might be helpful to equity. And to any of you, again, who are new to the financial scene too. So two things I thought were interesting. That Mary explained to me, um, the deficit reduction plan formula, and then our financial rating. Both of which were helpful to me as I make sense of the finances in our meetings. And then, um, for equity, I read that unemployment is higher for our Hispanic, for nationally, for the Hispanic population at eighteen point nine percent in April. And it's slated to go up. So it's something we might, we might want to think about in terms of our equity goals moving forward. And then, let's see, um, I also made a mistake this week. So I thought I'd share that with you so that, I mean, I made lots of mistakes this week. But one in particular that I thought you would probably be interested in, I tried to go to the Lake County Board meeting, um, to make a public comment then. And wanted to, because I wasn't there on time, I wanted to share the schedule with you. The next Lake County Board meeting is on May first. It starts at nine AM. And there were three members that voted, um, with a sensitivity towards schools and thought that might be a good, uh, time to thank those board members. And then the village board mem- meeting is on May fourth at seven, and the one twenty-seven board meeting is on the fourteenth at seven. So if anyone's looking to do any outreach to those boards, there's the schedule. So you don't, um, email administration and say, hey, is this correct? And have already missed the meeting. So then the last thing is the IASB has a book club that's starting. I don't know that this is pertinent to those of you who've been on the board for a while, but for those of us who are newer, there's three dates. It's June twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth, from noon to one. And we're reading the Governance Core, School Boards, Superintendents, and Schools Working Together. So I wanted to share that with you. In case that's of interest. That's it.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, we are now up to the superintendent's report.
All right, well, I'm happy to, uh, to jump in then, and I'm very happy to start with good news. Which is that both of the staff members who were ref'd last month have been recalled, right this March, or have been recalled already. Um, we've been able to bring them back. So, um, we, we thought that that would happen, and it happened even sooner than we thought it might. And we're really, really pleased by that. So that's a piece of good news. Um, also, I wanted to share that, um, today, we began, we had our first round of interviews for our tech director, our new tech director, to start July one. Um, Paul and Chris and I did, uh, first round of interviews. We were on a pretty quick timeline because our intent is to be able to bring a recommended, um, candidate to you at the next board meeting. So we are doing, um, another round on Friday, where we'll have a big team of people who are a part of those. So we've got staff members coming in, uh, you know, teachers, members of the tech team, and administrators. And then we'll bring final candidates to our cabinet on Monday. So that then we can start the process of vetting our final candidate and offering a position. And, um, being able to move forward with that recommended hire. Um, any questions about that? Okay.
We're not a question.
Yeah.
Is it too early to characterize the, the talent pool at this point? Do we feel like we've got some candidates?
We do. We do feel like we've got some candidates. Yeah, we were, yeah, we were pleased. Uh, we were pleased. Yeah. Um, okay, moving on, um, just a comment about eighth grade graduation. I'm not gonna go through the details of it because I know you heard about them at the last meeting. And then, um, more information has been sent out. But, um, the principals of, from both CARC and, um, GMS have let me know that they're really eager to have a board member. Please, on the video, um, to record a short, um, thank you and, and salient forth to our eighth graders. So, um, I don't know if you want to talk about that right now, about who would do it, or if you want to get back to me.
I can do it. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Wonderful. Hoping you would say that, Mr. Weedman.
I had a feeling. I had a feeling I was being set up for that.
I guess I should have warned you, but, um, I'll, um, I'll have Marcus get in touch with you to make a plan. I'm pretty sure we only have to make one video that can go out to both schools. All right, um, I wanted to talk with you about our free meals. Um, I wanted just to give you some, um, kind of updated information and kind of some summarized information. So, um, you know, we started providing free breakfast and lunch to families as needed, beginning as soon as our buildings closed. Um, so our numbers really rose every month pretty significantly. In March, when we just first got started, the numbers of how many meals were being served on a daily basis went from a hundred and sixty-six right at the start to four hundred and twenty-two towards the end of March. So that was kind of the range in March. In April, that range jumped to, um, four sixty-two in one day on the low end to five hundred and ninety on the high end. So that was what March, uh, April looked like. May jumped up again. Lowest was five hundred and thirty-eight. Highest was seven hundred and thirty-eight in one day. And by the way, not, you know, not a perfect, um, stair step, but in general, they rose almost every day, you know, incrementally. And then you know that last week, we began the process of having delivery, not just at GMS, but also at various locations around the district using our bus service. And thank you so much to Durham for that. And so those numbers have gone up again in the month of, um, oh, that's what I just gave you, five thirty-eight to seven thirty-eight, right? So seven thirty-eight was a, a recent count. Um, and as of yesterday, which is the last time I had a cumulative count, we have served nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-two meals. This is the start of the building closure. Um, I also wanted to make sure you were aware that we have a waiver from ISBE to be able to continue providing free lunch and breakfast to our families, to our students through June thirtieth at this time. We have not announced that yet to our families, but we'll do so soon to let them know that, um, breakfast and lunch will be able to continue to at least, um, June thirtieth. We are waiting to hear from ISBE if we will be able to have a further extension of that waiver. Uh, we think there's a likelihood that we'll hear that we'll have that, um, and we think we'll hear that soon. But we don't have that information for sure yet. Mary or John, do either of you want to share any more information about that?
No, that covers it for now.
Okay, great. All right. Any questions about meals?
Lynn, I have a question. The high school district doesn't have free and reduced lunch, if I'm understanding correctly. And we serve meals to everyone under the age of eighteen, right?
Right.
I was wondering if, if the high schools could be a drop-off point. And Christie, you mentioned before, and I thought that was a good point, our footprints are different, the districts are different. So is there a way that we are monitoring or quantifying, or somehow checking that the people who are picking up actually are students in our district, or do we, and I'm not asking because I think serve people. I just am wondering if there's a way to monitor that so that, to mitigate the different footprints if the high schools ended up being a drop-off point, or if that was possible.
So, um, first of all, I can share with you that we are carefully looking at, um, how many meals are being picked up at the various bus locations. And, um, after we have a couple of weeks of data, we may change our plans based on that data, you know, but we really want to take a look at that. Um, whether we would make changes to include one of the high schools, I, I don't know. I suppose that could be a conversation. But, um, I, I don't think so, because I think we have spots throughout our district, but we know it's our families. And, um, Mary or John, please, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that there is a rule that we are using to quickly ver- uh, verify the, um, the fact that the people that are picking up are our families. Am I correct about that?
That is correct. We don't have a current verification process to, um, check if the person picking up is an in-district, uh, person. Part of that could also be related to the fact that we are, as part of the program, we're supposed to serve students all the way up to age eighteen. Um, so there wouldn't be a way for us to verify if a seventeen-year-old, um, who technically is a high school student with the Grayslake High School, um, is one of our students. So we don't have a way to really accurately verify that. And I'll just chime in really quickly about the locations. Uh, we have a great relationship with the high school district. I'm sure if we asked them, they'd be more than willing to do it, but Central is two blocks away from Woodview where we have a bus. And North is right next door to Avon where we have a bus. So I don't see a need to stage buses in those spots. But like Lynn said, we're, we're obviously reviewing that as we go.
Okay, thanks.
This is Kristi, this is the other Kristi. Um, I was just, you know, doing some Googling, and it does look like Aramark is serving every day, every weekday at North from nine to eleven for the one twenty-seven Facebook page.
Yeah, they are serving, and again, don't quote me on this, but my understanding is they don't have access to free and reduced lunch. So it's coming out of their budgets, I'm guessing. And so it might, if we're serving kids anyway through the program, it might alleviate some financial pressure from the high school if we combine forces on this a little bit. And I know there's a whole bunch of logistics that I probably can't see at this point, so I, it was just a, I was just curious.
Got it. But again, anybody, any, any child eighteen or younger who lives in our district can get our meals. Um, and they, they could be going to private schools, you know, that, that doesn't matter as long as they live within our bounds. All right, so I'm going to move on to talking about the closing up process, and I'm going to hand it over to Paul to talk about that.
So thanks. So, um, Dr. Wickman asked me to talk about the closing up procedures. Um, the principals and their staff have been very busy trying to coordinate, um, organizing all of the student materials across the building. Um, and figuring out how to get those all ready for distribution, um, appropriately. So, um, this week, we have started having, um, volunteer staff come in and organize student, um, materials from their lockers, from their desks, from the gym lockers, from, um, the art rooms, from any of the other rooms where teachers would have had student materials. So the O and M department have been very helpful in getting us, um, bags, and the administrative staff have been, um, printing labels. So we're going to be prepared for distribution the last week of school, so June one, two, and three. Um, information will be going out from the principals for the direct plan. Some of them are doing them by grade level, some of them are doing them by homeroom, some of them are doing them by, um, wings of the school. So every building is so different that each principal, um, organized it the, the way that they would work. Um, so it will also be the opportunity for students to bring back any library books, um, eighth grade Chromebooks, um, any other textbooks. Um, and so we have that opportunity for parents for that. We also will be distributing any medication. Our nursing staff have been very proactive in getting a plan for, um, distributing of medication safely. Um, and so we have been working through many, many, many details, as you can imagine. Um, it's tremendous amount of work to organize everyone's student materials. Um, and then we also are working to get, um, if the schools had their yearbooks delivered by then, we'll have those distributed. Um, we have summer school materials going in the bags as well for anyone that I'm going to talk about summer school in a minute too, I think. We also will have, um, report cards and information going home, and EL updates and special ed updates. So there's a lot of things that we typically organize through teachers that we're having to do in a different way. So, um, my appreciation goes out, I know all of our appreciation goes out to all of the staff who've been able to support and help. Um, but there are lots and lots of details to make all of that happen. So, um, that June one, two, and three are the dates that are going to be coming up with a very specific plan of how we want parents to, um, come, parents and guardians to come into the parking lots, um, not get out of their cars. Um, and, um, have teams of teachers and, um, all of our assistants and everyone helping, um, bring materials right to their cars so they, they can be on their way. So closing up has been a very, very big project. Um, and again, the staff has been doing an amazing job to get this taken care of. We are purposely doing it at the end of the year so that all of those other things can go with them. We didn't want to have to have two opportunities for parents to have to come. So we're waiting as near the end as possible for all those things. I'm glad to take any questions that you might have about that. I, looks like I'm moving forward unless, um, the other topic I was asked to talk about was about summer school. So, um, some of my colleagues might join in with some of their information as well. Um, but summer school will look very different this year because we are continuing with remote, um, opportunities for all of our students in summer school. So, um, E S Y, I saw that Heather was ready. Um, if, if there were questions about E S Y, we're continuing there. Her team has been working hard to provide E S Y, and that stands for Extended School Year. So that's for identified students who, um, would require to have continued education over the summer to maintain their level of, um, academics. So there's a process that the I E P team follows to identify that. So, um, Heather's been coordinating a team to make all that happen. Heather, am I missing anything? So it sounded like we're good with that. Um, we also have an EL program that Dr. Diaz has been working on. Um, at the moment, she shared that we have a hundred and thirty-two students signed up for EL summer school. Those are for students who have, um, I'd been identified as a student in our EL program. Um, and so we have two levels of that for our bilingual students, um, and also for any, um, other EL students. Um, that hundred and thirty-two student seems like a lot. Unfortunately, it's about half of what we had last year. So it's a, um, significant reduction of, um, enrollments. Our other program is Title One, so that's for students who attend Avon School, our Title One whole school. Um, and so right now, as of today, we are between thirty-six and forty students enrolled, um, in that program. Um, and that is also about half of what we had last year. So we are, um, doing things a little bit differently. We are, um, having it as direct instruction. So it's going to look different than what our remote learning is looking like right now. So we'll have students on a device, um, with their teacher, um, holding class, approximately an hour for reading and an hour for math. Um, and so we're, um, doing things a little bit different. We're providing teachers with some different kinds of support for them to be able to hold that instruction digitally. So that will be very positive. Um, our other program, um, Academy, which has typically been the one that has, um, lots of different options, of course, so sports and arts and all those things. Um, we have made a decision not to hold that program this school year. Um, it's in line with all the other, many, many of the other school districts around. Um, one of the reasons is that for us to hold it, it would be very expensive for parents. Um, that's a break-even, um, program. And we, um, think that right now is not the time to be asking for, um, payment for, um, summer, summer opportunities. So that, that was a new decision from today that we've finalized that. Um, we've been trying, and the coordinators have been very, very strongly, um, trying to figure out how we can make that happen. So lots of summer school ideas and wonderings about, um, for District Forty-six.
Anything else, Lynn?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Of course. All right, so we were talking, that's all about closing up. But then there's a whole other conversation, a whole other world of conversation about reopening, about opening up in some way in the fall. And so I want to talk with you all about that. Um, so as I, I know you're aware, um, we don't know what it's going to look like in the fall. We are hearing about three possibilities. One, an ongoing building closure. Um, another is really, you know, opening up schools for all kids, opening up buildings for all kids, but with social distancing in place. And the third is, uh, the possibility of a, a hybrid model, which could mean some kids at home where perhaps their families would decide, no, they're not going to send their children into buildings, and other children in buildings. Or potentially, um, split shifts with small classes of students who can be spread apart, and therefore socially distanced. On some days, while other kids are home and. on some days while other kids are home and moving back and forth. And of course, those are the only, only the three possibilities that we've heard about. We, you know, there could be others that could be shot our way in a week or in two weeks. We don't really know. However, we have certainly been asked to start thinking about that and start planning. And one of the things that's hard in all of this is that we can only go so far with our planning. Because first of all, if, and let's just stick with these three options right now, we will unlikely be choosing one of those three options, right? It is very likely that that, the option will be chosen for us. And then within that option, despite the plans that we make, it is highly likely that we will get guidance from our state about, okay, and do it like this. But what we know is that we cannot wait until the middle of the summer to get that information and then start planning. That sounds like a nightmare just for everybody. So what we've decided to do is start planning for all three of those possibilities with the knowledge that we're not making any firm decisions. We are just readying ourselves with plans so that we can put them into action if it turns out that we are the decision makers on certain things, or so that we can revise them based on the information that comes to us, but at least we will have done our deep thinking about that. With that in mind, we have begun that process and here's where we are with it. Our entire administrative team has committed to dividing into three teams. And the way we have them currently organized and named, we have a teaching and learning team. No surprise that will be guided by Paul. We're going to have a social emotional health team. And then we'll have a, a team that deals with operational matters, facilities, and social distancing matters. So those are the three different teams. And then each one of those teams will have to come up with plans for each one of those three different possibilities of what might happen in the fall. What we're looking at doing right now is expanding those teams with staff members. And so I want to share some information with you about that in a moment. But what we've, we've sent out to our staff is a survey to see who might be interested in volunteering to be a part of one of those teams. What we've proposed to people is that teams would meet two hours a week, beginning as soon as next week and going throughout the summer as long as we need. Certainly, nobody thinks we're going to get that all wrapped up with a ribbon by the time school ends. So those meetings, those teams would continue to meet throughout the summer. We chose the two hours at a time, simply because those of us who spent a lot of time talking about those possibilities know that two hours seems like enough time to talk about these confusing issues. And people can kind of pull themselves up and get the energy, the mental energy and creativity to talk about it for about two hours. But any more than that, things tend to fall apart a little bit. We'll see, you know, we'll see if those two hours continue. In any case, so yesterday at about three thirty, I sent out a survey to our entire staff, talking with them about this and inviting people to volunteer for a committee, for a team. Within about a half an hour, there were, now, within about fifteen minutes, there were fifteen staff volunteers. Now that's aside from the administrators. Right before our meeting started, I took another check to see where we were and we were at sixty-two. And people have until the end of the day on Friday to volunteer for a committee, again, going through the summer. I have been overwhelmed by the responses that we've gotten. And I wanted just to very briefly read a few of the comments that have come back. Some of them have been just these very nice comments expressing thanks to the opportunity to participate. I'm not going to read you those, but they're very nice. But here's one that I thought was really worth reading aloud. It's, someone said, "It's been a difficult road for special education and at-risk students during remote learning. I would like to be involved in these areas so we as a district can better support all students in the transition to fall instruction." And a lot of staff making comments that basically says, "I'll do whatever it takes. Put me wherever you need me. I'm here to work." People wrote things like, "I would love this opportunity to help our district succeed in any direction we may go." That one came with a smiley face. And this one, "I'm willing to be placed on any of the teams to best help our students and staff." We have volunteers from every, obviously every school, but every kind of position. We've got people, you know, staff who work in our district office. We have, you know, program assistants, we've got instructional coaches, teachers, technology folks, every kind of, the social workers, special ed teachers, you name it, people are volunteering. So then, what do we do with that information? So we're looking at meeting a couple of hours a week and then our cabinet members are spread amongst the three teams. So then we're thinking we're going to pull cabinet members together shortly after each meeting to realign. Because obviously we cannot have these three teams meeting in silos and making recommendations that don't jive with each other, right? This all has to be kind of a perfect little gear, right, gears that are moving together. So we'll continue to realign with each other and then back, go back out to our teams, come back together, go back out to our teams. And then we talked about how can we involve the board in this work? And so what is making sense to us at the moment is just like you've asked for a rolling cash update at every board meeting, we were thinking we would also provide an update of this work at every board meeting. Give opportunities for board to get input. There will be places where we're going to be, you know, pausing, that we need some feedback. And again, nobody thinks we're making any real decisions. We are planning for the ability to make decisions. So I think that is what I wanted to share with you about that. Does anybody have any questions about that process or comments that you wanted to provide at this point about that process?
Nope, this is Christie. I don't have any, I don't have any questions. I would just say thank you to everyone who jumped in with both feet. And I, you know, I also am in with both feet, whatever you need. And I like the idea of giving the updates and I just really appreciate the proactivity. It's so hard. I know we were on the EdRed call last, a couple of weeks ago and I A S B, or the state, you know, was on the call. And they were acknowledging that schools need to know more sooner in order to make these decisions. And I know they're trying hard too, but I just, I really like the direction that you're going and just modeling out, you know, a couple of different paths so that you're ready to go down the path when you find out what the path is.
Thanks, Christie. Anybody else? Questions or comments? Okay, all right, so two, two more topics related to that. So if we are going to find ourselves in a position where we are not opening up our buildings again to all students in the fall, if that's what happens, there are some pieces that we need to put into place regarding remote learning. One of them is, we, it's time for us to get some feedback from families about remote learning. So we're going to put a, a survey out to our families. You know, we are at the end of the school year at this point. So the results of those surveys are not likely to resolve, it's not likely to change our practices for this year. But it will certainly be in our teaching and learning team so that we can talk about, you know, we, we have what we understand worked for people and we have all the anecdotal information, but we don't have quantifiable information from our families. So we're going to be gathering that. At this point, I think we'll probably be putting a survey out likely next week through my, you know, my regular communications with families. And then there's the Chromebooks. So we know that this year we muddled through for kindergarten through second grade with having students share Chromebooks with their older brothers and sisters, use devices that they already have in their homes, share with their parents work device. It's been pretty hard for people. And then, of course, did lend some out to families that didn't have any of those opportunities. If we find that our students are home again in the fall or are home part-time in the fall, we know we need to make it easier for our students in K two. So we are continuing to work on our plans about how we will fund devices for those students. I want to remind you all that it has been long the plan of the school district to increase the number of devices that we have for K two anyway. The district was not looking at going one-to-one for K two. It was going to be maybe two-to-one and they would be in the classrooms. What we're looking at doing now is funding enough Chromebooks so that if our K two students need to take them home, if that's the situation we're in, we'll have enough of them. If we are all in buildings, then we'll have them available for students to look, to use at school, but we might not be actually sending them home back and forth like we do with our older students. Well, we'll see. And then that comes down to the funding piece. What will we do? So you've heard us talk about the CARES money. We are hoping to get some information really soon. And we're hoping actually this week or next to be able to apply for that money. And that money will likely get us about halfway through funding Chromebooks for kindergarten to second grade. So then we go about the second half. We're looking at financing that second half. And as you may remember, having already heard, our wonderful Foundation Forty-Six is eager to help fundraise. And we would be therefore using the funds that they could raise to kind of offset there, to use that money actually for the financing, to pay off the financing. So that's where we are. We haven't closed the loop yet, but we wanted to let you know we're working really hard on that topic. Any questions about the survey or Chromebooks?
Lynn, I have a question about Chromebooks. I hear you and needing Chromebooks to be out there, given the e-learning and, and I appreciate the need for that. I'm also, and you mentioned that the long-term vision of the district was to have, not one-to-one, but devices available. I think part of that was also to make sure that learning and instruction wasn't dependent on, on digital and virtual instruction because we know that's not good for kids. So I'm curious how it marries with, are, are we doing project-based learning? Are we only investing in devices at this point, or is it part of a larger plan, or how does that work?
I would say, oh, you may want to jump in on this, but I'm going to say that's likely, that's going to be a, a piece of the work of that teaching and learning group. Anything you want to jump in on, Paul, or?
No, I think that's exactly what we need to be working on, on how to morph into that kind of instruction more. But at the moment, well, the, the beginning stage will of course be helping students and their parents even understand. And so there'll be a significant amount of P, a significant amount of PD that needs to be provided. Actually, those have been part of the interview questions. We've been hearing about some ideas and that will continue to be part of the interview questions over the next week to help support that whole idea. One of our challenges right now is that our K two teachers, it's nearly been impossible for them to have a class meeting or class instruction because of all the students who've been sharing devices or not having a device that's compatible at home with any of those things. And at least I think I'm, along with many of the educators, know that if we're back in remote learning to start the school year, it's not going to be the same as now when we're ending the school year because the kids know the routines, they know their teacher, they know how to do those things. So we think we're going to have to have more face-to-face instruction, face-to-face involvement on a more regular basis than what we've been able to provide for K two so far. They've been doing an amazing, fabulous, wonderful job, but we know we can do better or more.
Any other questions or comments about that? Okay, one more thing in the superintendent's report. It's a story and it's going to sound like it's about my family, but really it's about you, Board of Education. So as you know, my father-in-law passed away two weeks ago and that's why I wasn't able to be at the last board meeting. And many thanks again to Paul for, for jumping in on my behalf that day. I did, by the way, in case you're curious, I did view the entire two-hour nineteen-minute meeting when I got home back from California. So I saw what a great job Paul did. In any case, what I wanted to share with you is that my father-in-law had been a Board of Education member and a Board of Education president. My, my husband grew up in Highland Park and in the mid-eighties, my father-in-law was the president of the District One-O-eight Board of Ed. District One-O-eight was, is now part of District One-Twelve, which is a larger district that's all Highland Park and Highwood. Back in that day, it was three districts and he was the president of One-O-eight Board. He was also at the same time the president of the N S S C O Board, which is the Special Education Co-op that was, that was in that district. And he did that for many years. And when my husband's family, when we were all gathered in California a couple of weeks ago, one of my brothers-in-law came across a very large framed resolution that the Board of Education had presented to my father-in-law during the time that he was working or that he was the president and he was serving in that way. And my brother-in-law Jimmy asked my mother-in-law, could he take this home? This was the one thing that he wanted from his father on this trip. And said yes. And so he lugged this big giant thing through, you know, an airport in his luggage while, I think, while, you know, while worrying about being masked and having gloves on and worrying about social distancing, he lugged this thing home. And the reason he did it is it was so incredibly important to him to think about what his father had done for him and his brothers as a child, the commitment that he had to their, their education. And I tell you that because I'm going to make you guess that when you get off one of these calls or you come home from one of the meetings, your kids don't jump up and down and say, "Oh, my gosh, you are so awesome. I am so proud of you for being on the Board of Education." They probably are not saying that to you, but they will remember. They will remember and hopefully one day they will say it to you and I just wanted you to hear that story. And with that, I am done with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. That was a nice story too. Okay, so next is committee reports, Community Engagement Committee.
Stephen, do you want to start with the dashboard?
Sure, because that'll only take a minute of our time here. We had mentioned the dashboard at the last meeting and this is a dashboard, again, that's only within the committee for informational purposes only, but we wanted to show it to you just to give you a sense of the types of conversations that the team is having and the types of information that we are coalescing for ourselves at the moment. Again, this is something that is not a public site. We, we drafted it in Google Sites so that it's easily accessible by team members when we are working on some of the projects that the team has been working on. So I, can I, can I present when I'm in this meeting? I think I can. Let's see. I'm going to show you what it looks like. Let me know if you can see the screen, because I no longer am with you, so I can't see any of you anymore.
I can see it.
Okay, so this, this is, this is what it is looking like in its, in its very rough draft form. Okay, so the Community Connections Team where we, where we have a homepage, so to speak, and we have a, you know, the roster of the committee members so that we can each get in touch with each other. It's in a Google Doc. We can each get in touch with each other if need be. Our final meeting, Christie, I'm correct in saying that our final meeting is tomorrow, right? Before we pause for the summer and then potentially have some touchpoints over the summer. But individual members are adding these, these, these tabs along the top are all of the different resources that we've gathered from the district, from local government, federal government, state government, all that kind of stuff, and put it in here in one location for us right now. Should this morph into something else over the years? Should this morph into something else over the years or over the months that are coming? We can certainly, you know, discuss that as a team. But we put together a large list of faith-based organizations, you know, Christian churches, synagogues, mosques, and so on and so forth in the area to serve our community and as best as possible. We also have food resources tabs that we're going to populate and other important links as well in there. So we do list the district website, Lake County Centers for Disease Control. There'll be some other federal government sites there listed as well. And as I mentioned last time, this is not a site that supersedes in any way information that is coming from the district. This is right now a team website where we're sharing it as a dashboard. And Kristi and I had mentioned dashboards in the past as a tool that we wanted to use at some point. And so this is kind of a rough draft of how we would see something like this look. But again, right now it's only within our team. It is not public. We're not directing anybody to use this in any way except for our team. And I thought I would touch base with you about that since I mentioned that at the last meeting and give you a visual sense of all of the information that we as a team have been collecting. So that's a quick rundown of that dashboard. Kristi, I'll hand it back over to you. Let me stop presenting. I'll figure it out in a minute. There we go.
Yeah, so this is a review. The purpose of our team, the Community Connections Team, has been to find ways to connect people to one another and to resources in the community. And we've done that with a focus of food security and then wellbeing. Our initiatives have been grab-and-go, the gardening, and then the letter writing. And each of those was chosen because it supports both physical wellbeing and also good mental health. And kind of a surprise, it ended up being good academic connections too with handwriting. And some of the pen pals have become classroom activities on Thursdays for two of the schools. And then all of that within the safety parameters. So just, that's kind of a review of what we've done. Our focus right now is on internal processes. So we're working on developing kind of communication plans so that we're not, so that we have consistent messaging and so that administration gets our communications early. And this time, we've tried to find another Spanish translator so that Dr. Diaz doesn't have to do all of it for us. So that's in the works too. If you don't have that in our inboxes, we will soon. And then we're also working to identify what each of our stakeholder groups are. And we've developed or are in the midst of developing a set of core questions, three. And then that would go out to each stakeholder group. And then two questions that would go out to each individual group. And then we'll converge all that information into an end-of-the-year report that we can share with you when it's done. Those questions are slated to go out with the e-learning survey that Lynn mentioned earlier. And that's the challenge that we're facing right now is assessing and evaluating what we've done in the past several months so that we can improve it and build upon it in the fall. And in the fall, one of the things that we're talking about doing is having some sort of volunteer development program that would eventually span other boards so that volunteers could come together and learn things that, from meeting facilitation skills to dialogue skills to whatever else we identify, that then could become kind of a pipeline to any kind of civic board work. So that's one of the things that's on our radar that I just wanted to put on yours. And if you have any suggestions for survey questions, especially making sure they're reliable and valid, that's something that's on our mind. Stephen's looking at a motivation survey that he used in his dissertation. But that would be helpful to make sure that whatever decisions we made are based on valid and reliable information. And if you have any suggestions for that volunteer development program, that would be helpful. And then you can also expect as one of the stakeholder groups to see a survey in your inboxes. And if you could help us out by filling that out and sending it back, that would be most helpful as we try to, again, compile all that data and make sense of it. Thanks. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for them?
Not a question, but a comment. The dashboard looks really great. And I think it's, you've built a platform that's sustainable. And should you decide to migrate it over to the broader D46 website in part or whole, you've created a really nice platform to do that. And I think it's also going to create efficiencies in your communication plan that you mentioned you guys were building out when you're able to just refresh the content there and push people out to a link as opposed to newsletters, et cetera. So really nice job.
Thank you. Thank you, Tamika.
Thanks, Tamika.
Okay, next is the EDRed report.
Coming off mute. So I just wanted to share, we, thank you for those of you who were able to join the monthly EDRed meeting. And just wanted to share a couple of things that they're focused on on the behalf of suburban school districts as we, as the state navigates what's going on. And it's the most important thing that they're really doing is making sure, urging legislators to hold funding for schools flat to fiscal twenty levels. And not to sort of draw down the, you know, not to basically pull back or, you know, prorate any EBF funding. So in other words, to keep, for schools to all keep the baseline that they have as a priority. So they have a couple of details that I am not an expert on, but that's kind of where many of their efforts are going right now is making sure that they have a position that the state can fund that formula to fiscal twenty-based funding levels in the 2021 budget. The other thing that they're working on is making permanent the provision that allows for that inter-fund transfer flexibility that Mary and John have been sharing with us. Right now that expires at the end of June. But they're hoping that that can continue so that we have that continued flexibility in how we manage our cash flow between, manage between funds. And then there's a couple of other things that I'm less conversant in, but they're around, you know, capturing any lost CPI and giving us more time to capture lost CPI. We haven't, you know, that's not something that we have done. We have captured all of our CPI for the past five years, I believe. I think it's been quite a while since we did not capture that. So I don't necessarily think that applies to us. As well as some information on TIF reform that doesn't necessarily apply to us either. There's some great information. You guys, I had, I asked the executive director to sign you all up for the monthly report that comes from EDRed because I found it really useful. And then on their website, any one of us can make an account. And they have a whole white paper on their state budget considerations that I'm kind of reading from, but that's available to you all as well. So I'd highly suggest, take a half an hour, get your, get your member ID created and then you can go on and access this information yourself as well. So that's the report. The next monthly member meeting is Friday, the first Friday in June. So I'll report more after that. And I guess the only thing, other thing I'd mention is, as I said, there was the legislative liaison from I A F B was on the monthly member meeting. And as I mentioned, basically what she had to say was nothing surprising, which is, we don't know anything. And we're not going to know for a while and we know that everyone wants to know. But she was really nice when she said it. So that is the EDRed report.
Next would be the Equity and Inclusion Committee.
So that's me. So I'm openly sharing that we are hoping and planning for a meeting by the end of the school year. It seems like it's one of those things that is on my list every day to work on and it hasn't gotten to. And so we'll be looking at the survey results. The good news is of the people who've responded so far, there's lots of interest to continue and to meet and to continue next year. And lots of interest. And so that's really a positive thing. I do apologize, it just has not risen to the top at the moment, but it is on the list of things to get scheduled soon.
Hey, Paul, if you can use these spare hands in any way to compile data or do, you know, some analysis for you, just let me know.
Thank you so much.
And, you know, I just wanted to jump in to comment that although the committee hasn't met, and certainly, Paul, I can tell you, I know all the things you've been doing, so I know why you haven't been able to schedule it. It's not like we haven't had ongoing conversations about equity in our district. I mean, the decisions that we have been making over all of these weeks and months during our building closures, so many of them have related, been related to equity issues. So I did just want to point that out.
All right, next is our consent agenda. So if I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda and the updated personnel report that was sent out today.
So moved.
I'll second.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, we'll call.
Braden?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
LaCroy? LaCroy?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mac?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm two action items. The first one is a motion to approve the board meeting calendar A or B for the 2020, 2021 calendar year. Board, calendar A was the one that was presented to us last week. Option B was a revision due to Ash Wednesday that was brought up by staff. B would give us, would eliminate one board meeting in the month of March. In the month of March? In the month of March? And that would be the only meeting for that. We'd only have one meeting in that month. So looking for a motion for A or B.
Can I ask you a quick question, Jen, of, I guess, the staff? Does that put, does having only one meeting in March put you at any disadvantage in terms of approvals for bills and expenditures and stuff?
Here, Jen?
So I'll chime in with that. It was a good discussion that we had on the cabinet level. I'll put it this way. There's other districts and other school boards that have only one board meeting a month. Not saying I'm advocating for that or anything, but they get through and make their bill payments and everything. So I'm not concerned with it. We would prefer two board meetings a month, but overall we can support one board meeting in March.
Okay, great. Thank you. I guess I'll move for B then. So that Ash Wednesday can be free.
I'll second that. We'll call.
Weedman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mac?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
And Strack?
Aye.
Okay, next is a motion to approve the Durham contract revision.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, anybody need any discussion on that or follow-up from John or Mary?
I'm so glad for that revision. And Jason, I think you're the one that brought it up. So thank you for encouraging us to make sure that the bus drivers are continued to be paid. I really appreciated that.
The only thing I'll chime in here as well is I know there was a version of this contract that was presented at the last board meeting. And as we said, there were ongoing discussions with Durham. Just in light of everything going on, this is a new frontier for all of us. So the one thing that is changed from the one, the contract presented at the last board meeting to this one is just a clause encouraging Durham to not lay off any of its employees during this time. So we've had some negotiations, some information about that. So just wanted to say that's included in this contract in light of some things that we've been hearing throughout the state to make sure we had the best possible bulletproof contract we could with Durham. And I just wanted to publicly praise Durham for being more than willing to renegotiate during this time. They could have very easily stuck to their guns and said, no, we have a contract and this is how we're going to function. And instead they have been, I would argue, bending over backwards to make accommodations for us in this time. So.
John, can I just ask a quick question? The six percent increase, is that for the revision for this year's contract? Or is that next year's contract? Can you just clarify that?
Absolutely. That's part of the renewal for next year's contract. So there's no change, the revision that we're talking about right now is only applying to the current contract through the end of this school year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we'll call, please.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mac?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Mac?
Aye.
Okay, next is a motion to approve the Durham contract renewal. As Kristi just said, it's for a six percent.
I apologize for not knowing the details on that, but can someone, even after we vote, can someone explain why the six percent increase? I'm just, given that the revenue stream is so uncertain right now, I'm hesitating about increasing expenditures. So just, I'm wondering, I know the administration recommended it. Could you just help me understand that a little better, please?
Absolutely. So I would say kind of two answers to that. The first piece being the six percent increase is in light of the state of transportation in Illinois in general. Especially in Lake County. I don't know if you drive along 45, but there's been times where I've driven along 45 and seen three different signs advertising for bus drivers. So competition and wages are going through the roof right now. And this was before COVID-19. So a six percent increase in light of what some other districts have been seeing and experiencing is actually a relatively low increase. How that's going to impact next year, we're not at 100% positive. We're going forward with the six percent increase, but also with the understanding, as you'll see on this new version of the contract, that should there be any changes from the state in terms of school closures or any changes in our transportation needs, we do reserve the right to reopen negotiations on the contract to put in similar clauses to what we're doing with the revision now. So should, I don't want to make any predictions about what's happening in the fall, but if anything does go and we're not having a normal school year next fall, then we obviously have the opportunity to go back to the table with Durham.
And do those extensions include the change in tax payment installments relative to the county board's decision a couple of days ago? Is there anything that that we should think about?
I would say, go ahead.
No, go ahead, John, please.
I would say it's somewhat unrelated in the sense that Durham, Durham provides the transportation. They have set costs and fees in terms of, this is what it costs to have a bus driver in a bus seat for this number of routes. And that, that whole, unlike a school district, those revenues aren't determined by what happens at the school district level. It's just, they've agreed to provide a service and we have to pay them an appropriate amount of money to provide that service for us. So I wouldn't say that because of the financial uncertainties that we're facing that that has any, what's happening on the school district level, I don't think has much of an impact on them from a private company standpoint. So for example, I don't think we'd be in a spot where we could go back to them and say, you know, financially, there's some uncertainty, you know, we would like some more considerations. And I'm sure if we did that, they would come back with, we still have bus drivers we have to pay, we still have buses that still have to be maintained, we still have routes that need to be run. So we're, they're already at a pretty slim profit margin already.
Okay. And yet, some of our funding may not come in. So I guess I'm just struggling with how do we increase expenditures when we're looking at potentially a pretty significant decrease in revenue, given the unemployment? That's it's at 14% now, 14.7% now in April, and it's it's slated to climb to 25% nationally. I don't know how that impacts our Lake County, but it makes me hesitate to sign a contract with people unless we're confident enough that we can follow through on the contract. So are you saying that with the projections, the financial projections that you're that you're privy to, that you're confident that we won't have to break the contract or we'll be able to pay them? Or is there a provision for if funding doesn't come through, will we be able to change the contract? Is that, I guess those are two questions, is there any provision for that?
I would say that there is a re opener clause essentially that we put in this contract. So if if things aren't, you know, in light of what's going on with ISB and everything, I think there is the opportunity to to go back to Durham, just like we did this year, and say, hey, you know, that we're in special circumstances, we need to revisit this contract. So I think that there's that opportunity. I think the other thing I would say too is is there's certain things that were required by law to provide. So a student who lives, you know, two miles away from the school district, I I don't think by law, unless something changes from an ISB perspective, I don't think that we can just suddenly stop transporting them because we can't afford the bus anymore. We still are required, if they meet certain criteria, that we have to transport them to the school. So I I think if we got to a point where the financial uncertainties caused us to evaluate different programs and and things at the district level, that's something that we would have to assess as a as an administration and as a board. But transportation, we'd have to take factor in things like what are we required by law to provide? Transportation is one of them.
Okay, thanks, John, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, I do believe we had a first and a second, right?
No, we don't have any, either one, I don't think. I don't, I didn't hear one.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the Durham contract renewal.
I'll second.
Strack?
Aye.
Mac?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye. Okay, next is a motion to approve the Performance Services contract.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, we'll call vote.
Mac?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Okay, uh, next is a motion to approve, uh, Mary Whirling, uh, CS, CSBO as the school treasurer. This is an annual appointment that we have to do every year to make sure we have a treasurer, take care of all the stuff in the business office.
So moved.
Second.
This is for next school year.
Anybody have any questions?
This is for next school year?
Yes. We'll call.
Miller?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
Mac?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Okay, uh, hold on. Next is, okay, that takes care of all our action items. Next is unfinished business. The first item is the continued discussion regarding cash flow projections.
Here we go. Thank you. Uh, tonight, we're continuing our our conversation with the board around the district cash flow projections, and we're providing information to you about the level of funds the district can anticipate to receive from local, state, and federal sources, especially given the impact of COVID-19 on these important revenue streams. If we turn the calendar back just one week to last week, it was on Wednesday that I drafted this memo for tonight's Board of Education meeting. And just yesterday, a decision was made, as Christie commented earlier, by the Lake County Board impacting the property tax collection cycle that in fact makes part of this report that's before you tonight partly out of date. And this is the reality that we are all experiencing right now. There are many decisions being made at every level, and as each decision is made, there may be an impact that we need to consider in our planning. And so that's where we are right now. New information was, a decision was made yesterday by the Lake County Board that does impact our property tax collection cycle. So so let's review, as it relates to local revenue, let's review what we do know about the collection of the 2019 property tax levy that was filed by the district in December of 2019. We do know that the property tax bills were mailed to all of the property owners last week on May 4th by the Lake County Treasurer's Office. The bills that were issued do specify a due date of June 8th for the first installment and the due date of September 8th for the second installment. Last Thursday, the Lake County Finance and Administration Committee met to consider an ordinance where taxpayers who are experiencing financial hardship could submit an application to the Lake County Board to be considered for a property tax installment payment option. And the approval of that installment payment option would be based on need. So if a family had experienced a layoff or job loss, those could be reasons for which the Lake County Board would approve, would have approved this installment plan. The ordinance was then presented to the county board yesterday and was amended. And the amendment that was approved by the county board effectively split the tax payment cycle into four installments. And the ordinance that was approved specifies that taxpayers would pay the first, they could pay 50% of the first installment on June 8th, and then 60 days later could pay the balance of the first installment on August 9th. It further states that the second installment, 50% could be paid on September 8th. And then again, 60 days later, the balance could be paid on November 9th. Now, as I commented a few minutes ago, the property tax bills were mailed indicating the original two due dates for first installment and second installment. So of course, each of you are property tax, are property owners in Lake County, and you can expect to receive a clarifying communication from the Lake County Board letting you know, informing you of these options. I have been in communication with the Lake County Treasurer's Office, and in that communication, I I did learn an additional nuance to the ordinance that was approved by Lake County. And I think this is important, I want to highlight this for the board, that the important limitation on the ordinance is that the Lake County Treasurer's Office is not able to accept four payments from escrow payers. So what that means is every taxpayer who pays their property tax, who their monthly mortgage payment includes a component that is credited to their escrow account for property taxes, those monies need to be turned over to Lake County. Those bills need to be paid on time, the 100% of the first installment on June 8th and 100% of the second installment on September 8th. So mortgage companies, title companies, and other escrow agents will have to pay the full amount as printed on the bill. So so that was an important limitation of the ordinance that I learned just this afternoon. Taking that a little bit further, the Lake County Treasurer's Office has indicated that roughly 35% of the tax payments are paid out of escrow. So the update to the cash flow that I'm working on now takes that assumption that if 35% of the taxes are paid out of escrow, meaning on June 8th, we will receive 100% of that portion of the property tax collection, we can expect to receive 50% for those who, those taxpayers who need to split their payments across that now four cycle. So we can expect in June to receive 60, excuse me, 60 to 70% of the first installment. Uh, and as I indicated, I'm updating the cash flow to reflect this. I'd like to pause now and ask if the board has any questions about this new ordinance and the cycle and what we can expect for the property tax collections in terms of what will be received when?
Hey, Mary, this is Jason. So with the new information that's not reflected in the memo that's in front of us, that would affect just the most likely case, right? The worst case is still the worst case we can think of right now. Is that true?
Yeah. So if we, if you take a look at the summary table at the bottom of the memo that's before you know, before you now, you can see that the most likely case, the 90% of the first installment is what we, as of last Wednesday, were expecting to receive by June 30th. And that indicates our cash balance would be roughly $20 million at the end of June. The worst case scenario that had been drafted indicates an assumption about a what if, if 50% of the first installment. So so where we are right now is really in the middle. So if we're targeting a cash flow update that gets us to about 60 to 70% collection by June 30th, we would be probably in the 15 to 16 million dollar range. So in the middle of those two columns, worst case and most likely. Does that happen?
That's your new most likely, right?
That's my new most likely.
Does the worst case get worse?
Um, I would say no. My, uh, without running through the numbers, there will be a similar trend for the September 8th collection where we will receive about 70% of that first installment. But because the second payment for the first installment is due in August, by the end of August or September 1st, I would expect to be in a similar place.
And then remind me again, the low point of our balances in the course of the year usually happens in the spring, right?
Right, it's usually in May. So we have interest payments on our bonds that are due, and we're waiting for the property tax collections to come in. So that's usually the low point.
So the timing of these, the bifurcation of these two installments doesn't really put us in jeopardy. It's not near our low point of the year. So as it relates to, I mean, just the overall impact of people's ability to pay their property tax at all, that's really the the key variable. It's not the timing of this isn't going to really make or break us in the in the.
Right, and so in 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 conversing with the Lake County Treasurer's Office, of course, you know, to use the term unprecedented, yes, Lake County Treasurer's Office isn't able to really provide an estimate for us as to the percentage or portion of individual taxpayers that may default, may need to default. When we talk about tax sales, again, that's a difficult one for Lake County Treasurer's Office to consider what that's going to look like. What's going to be the market for tax sales for those properties that need to default? And those people are interested in in that kind of endeavor. You know, what is their line of credit and what's their availability from the bank? So there there are many moving parts. Now, the Lake County Treasurer's Office has indicated that they don't think it'll be double digits. So our most likely, that says our total net collection will be 90% is a little bit on the conservative side, which I would suggest we leave it there until we get further into the summer and we see what the real patterns are.
Yeah, I wonder if you even assumed the default rate is equal to the unemployment rate, where we know that, I mean, there's a lot of two income households that, even if one of the two incomes was lost, it probably wouldn't necessarily mean default, but.
And then there is, um, the difficulty with that assumption would be understanding how many of, how many of the the individuals who are unemployed have a second income and also have been paying their property taxes into escrow, meaning they've already paid this year. It's it's sitting ready to be released. You know, so that's the other, that's the other factor that I think would make that assumption a little bit off target.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, Mary.
Sure. Are there any other questions about the property tax collection cycle per the new ordinance? If Mary?
But I know I asked you earlier this week about a budget reduction plan. We're we're not concerned about that at all, not close to the third, the, that the estimated ending fund balance should be less than three times the operating fund balance. Is that, have I cited the the formula correctly?
Yeah, so you were referring to the tentative amended budget for this current fiscal year that will be, for which a public hearing will be held in June. And yes, I will explain what you and I talked about, I'll share that with the board, that the Illinois State Board of Education budget requirements do indicate for specific funds that if there is a deficit, that there may in fact be a requirement for a budget reduction plan to be filed with the Board of Education at the time that the amended budget or original budget is filed. The specification further indicates that this budget reduction plan is required only in circumstances where the deficit is greater than one-third of fund balance. And so that was Christie's question is pertaining to the tentative amended budget and the deficit that is predicted in that budget, does that in fact trigger the need for a budget reduction plan? Because the the district is fortunate to have sufficient fund balance at this time, the deficit of 2.7 million that is embedded in the amended budget, it is well below that one-third threshold. So there will be no reason to anticipate our need to have that conversation about a budget reduction plan or submit anything of that nature to the Illinois State Board of Education at this time or this particular budget.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions before I move on to state funding? The the governor has called the state legislature back in session there to convene next week on matters such as the state budget. We'll closely follow the state legislature's deliberation on the matter of the state budget and of course appropriations for education. The traditional timeline is for the state legislature to authorize a budget for the upcoming year by May 31st. We have experienced years in which the state was on. We have experienced years in which the state was unable to accomplish that requirement by May 31st. There have also been years where the budget was not authorized. However, appropriations for education have, were authorized. So as I commented, we will be watching these deliberations closely. We'll be following the conversations and any new information regarding state funding will be incorporated in the next update to the Board of Education. So for right now, as it relates to state funding, there's no new information embedded in the cash, cash flow projections or the tentative amended budget. Just to review for purposes of both of those tools, we've assumed that EBF funds will continue to be received on time and that the district will receive three of four mandated categorical payments. That's for regular transportation, special ed transportation and special ed private facility reimbursements. And the district has received two of four. So it's just one lingering, that third payment that's been vouchered but not yet received. And we do expect to receive that by the end of this fiscal year, by June 30th. And no changes to our assumptions for federal funding. At this point in time, we're monitoring, continue to monitor all the factors that impact district cash. And in addition, studying it by fund, should there be a need to make an adjustment and come forward to the board with a recommendation to transfer monies from one fund to another? We will continue to stay on top of any information that helps inform our decisions about the, the cash flow needs or potential need to make an inter-fund transfer before the end of the year, during the summer and certainly in, in the fall. So we're really focusing on those key time periods as, as we navigate these new waters. Are there any other questions at this time?
No, okay. Thank you, Mary. Next would be a continued discussion from community engagement and vision.
Yeah, okay, so just as a review, I tried to share a screen with you last time that I think was too small for you to see, so I sent it to you in the board packet and then I got some responses and so I've amended it. And then I also broke it into pieces. So I'm going to suggest, I'm going to show you, I'll share a screen with you in a minute. But I wanted to back up a minute because of a correspondence that Lynn and I had about the categories that they're focused on administratively. And my question to her was what categories in the document that I shared with you that's in the board packet, would we want to carry over and which ones would complement what they're doing so that the direction of the district is easy to discern? So I'm going to try to share this with you now and you can let me know if it is easier to read. And let's see, I can't, I think this one's it. Can you see anything now?
Yeah, which one is that on?
What's that?
Which one is that? Which category?
So what I've done is taken, the graphic that I sent you before had categories across the top and they are revenue expenditures, social community, structural, instructional. And then I added a couple based on some input that I got from you guys and then also some ideas that I had too. So I added equity because that's been consistently a focus of ours and then sustainability because of the solar panels. So does that make sense? That I took the graphic before and, and thought before we start adding bullets, it made sense to me to make sure that we're, these are the categories that we want to focus on and then move to the bullets. And it's matched here and Lynn, I don't know, you had, there was a third one I thought in your report that I didn't see in the email. You've got safety, teaching and learning, and then I thought I heard you talk about one more. But I don't remember what it was. Okay.
So one is teaching and learning. One is social emotional health.
That's it.
And then one is the whole operational facilities and social distancing. And, and all of those are tightly linked to specifically how do we open up in the fall? That's what those, what could those teams are very specifically about.
Okay, and then those, those are the categories from which you did your scenario planning as an administrative team, is that correct?
We will be, yeah, we will be, yes.
Okay, so what I'm wondering is do we want to take a look at these categories as a board, make sure that they complement what the administrative team is doing and then use that same process to add bullet points for context and then generate three scenarios that we might want to move forward with and for.
What do you, what do you envision us putting together that we would be moving forward with? It would be different than what administrative and staff put together in Lynn's planning, uh, teams that she's put together. I would think that for us as a board, we would be relying on their work as the quote unquote subject matter experts of, of how they're planning on putting the school back together in the fall. I, I want to make sure that we don't kind of, we as a board don't dig too deep into stuff that they should be working on.
Absolutely, and we want to stay off the dance floor. So the, the point isn't about, um, similar to the dashboard, it's not about replacing what the administrative team is doing because they are the experts and absolutely need, that, that's their, their work. But our work is to generate a direction and articulate that. And then our work also is to reach out to other boards and to reach out to stakeholders that are not directly related to the school system. So our work is different, as I understand it, unless I'm wrong, but our, our work is different from the school administration's work in that when we look at stakeholders, because there are a number of stakeholders that we represent that are not directly related to the schools. And we're, um, by policy, we've even, one of our policies says we want to reach out to other boards and work with them. And then also that we have an obligation to reach out to stakeholders other than board meetings. So I think for us, it would be mostly the social community piece. And how are we reaching all of our stakeholders aggressively outside of board meetings, which could just be community committee meeting structures or advisory groups or, you know, a whole host of pretty familiar things that, many of which we do. And then there was also a suggestion that came by email of just hosting coffees, virtual coffees, so that we could start preparing some, the stakeholders, so there's no surprises in the fall. And so they understand what's going on and, and then we, I think, might avoid some of the backlash that we've had in the past where people come screaming at us when they hear about changes for the first time. If we involve them through advisory committees and other outreach, then again, we extend our transparency principle and we also, and we also extend the no surprises principle that we work from. So that's just my thinking.
Yeah, to me, I would just be careful about a little bit of overreach of trying to do too much as the school board when we need to be concentrated on the education of the kids as our primary goal. And I get we want to reach out and try and work with other boards. And when I, when I, when I think of reaching out to other boards and working with them is just trying to coordinate some things with them and, and letting them know where we're at on things as well as getting information from them. I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not taking on too big of a pie of trying to be the most responsible party in the, in the entire community.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I definitely don't think we can do that even if we wanted to. It just seems to me that it might be worthwhile to reach out to other taxing bodies because with unemployment increasing and just generally with education changing, there's some, some opportunities to build bridges with other, other boards so that we're using and stewarding the resources in our community really wisely without stepping on our administrator's toes. I certainly am not trying to direct instruction or what goes on in classrooms. I don't think that's our, that's the dance floor that we're supposed to stay off of. But it is our job to reach out to other boards and to talk with other community members so that the taxpayers' resources are being stewarded well. So I, I don't, maybe I'm making it more complicated than, than it needs to be because I'm, I'm just thinking what would happen if we, if we ended up going to other board meetings, if we split that up or if we reached out to our elders a little more aggressively and just even shared information that things going on in the district. So it, it doesn't have to be a complicated huge, are you worried about time or worried about?
If I'm, if I'm hearing, so listening to what you're kind of mentioning now, it almost sounds like we need to develop a communications plan to tell the people of the community what we're doing, not necessarily digging into everything. You know, so whatever the, the administration is working on, how are we going to regurgitate that out to the public? Through either the website or Facebook or your, the virtual coffees or, or whatever type of, it sounds more like you're trying to work on a communication plan than trying to break this down into different areas.
Um, I think that would be part of it, yeah. And definitely as part of the social community part, I mean, that might be the best place to start. The other piece that I, that I'm curious about, and this might get into the, the dance floor a little more, but D127 has a one, has a portrait of a graduate. So I'm wondering if, if there's something that would be useful for other people, for our residents to know about what that is, that our education pipeline from K-12 up to CLC, what we're trying to do. And of course, we don't necessarily dictate that. We are partners and help inform that, but our administrators tell us what, what they can do and what makes sense according to their expertise. But that might be something that as a community, if we understand that our graduates, our graduates, by the time they leave 12th grade can do this and we support that all the way through our community. I don't, I don't know if that's what our community wants. So it's more than a push information out. It's also an invitation for people to speak into what education looks like from 30,000 feet, not from the granular. And I don't know how the rest of everyone feels about that or is it, when you say overreach, is that what you're? Can you talk more about that?
I, I'm just afraid that we're trying to do too much at a time where we have so much going on.
Gotcha.
Of trying to, um, you know, nobody's gone through this in our lifetime, right? We've never really had schools shut down. We've never gone through mass lockdowns in states and a big, you know, health crisis. We haven't gone through that in our lifetime.
Sure.
That, I'm 50 years old and that's as far as I get around. So I, I want to make sure that we maintain our focus on educating the children and working on those options for what we're going to look like in the fall that the staff is going to do and not try and do way too much as it is. Because everybody, we're not the only ones that are digging into a whole bunch of different ways of how we're going to open. And I just want to make sure that we're not like taking on a big chunk of that, you know, pie that we, or I gotta, you know, let's keep our bites a little smaller than, and not take on too much that we become overwhelmed and we actually do nothing.
Right, right.
That's the theory you do too, you try and do 100 different things and you accomplish none, but everything's done 50%.
Sure.
You know, and you've accomplished nothing. Whereas if you could do 25 things and get 25 things done, then you've at least accomplished some things and goals, getting them done. I just want to make sure we're not taking on too much as a board and, and as a school district that we really maybe don't have a whole lot of
Capacity.
Capacity or even really the, um, to take on some of that stuff.
Okay, so would communication, if that's just the only, is that a site, a chunk that's workable?
I think, I think helping to put together a communication plan would be helpful for, you know, to be able to figure out how we as a board can help them with that communication plan of disseminating out your virtual coffees, your, you know, a Zoom meeting with an informational type of thing, you know, or even something along those lines would be more up our alley at this point than trying to dig in to do a whole bunch. Again, I'm one board member, that's just my opinion on this. And I'm open to other people's thoughts here too.
Okay.
I, I mean, this is Christie, I, I really liked what Jason proposed at our last meeting just, you know, making sure that there's something on our website that kind of outlines. Honestly, in Lynn's terms of what Mary is explaining to us, so again, I don't, you know, I don't even know that it's necessarily, is it work that we do versus just making sure that the, that those, you know, kind of that ongoing update about how we're thinking about the budget related to COVID, to Jim's point, is out there. And is that like a first bite that we could take that's small enough that's doable? But again, I, I defer to the administration to say, you know, is that, is that, is that the board? You know, or is that, um, you know, is that an ask? Is that a reasonable ask of the district office that's kind of crazy right now too? But I did like that idea and thought it was a good start.
Yeah, and this is Tamika, to piggyback on what Christie B. just said. You know, one of the things that had come out of our ISB conference, I guess in November, was talking about, you know, really creating those links. The board is really creating those links between administration and community. And so to Jim's point, if our administrative body is already doing that heavy lifting, you know, we just ensure that there's a dotted line and high visibility and transparency to our community stakeholders so they stay connected, informed, engaged into what's happening to just create that buy-in. And then I think it was something that was talked about in a prior meeting where Jason talked about just the financials, right? And making sure that, you know, we had a way to create transparency and reporting out about that. You know, all of that really centers around just having a mech, a mechanism more portable, whether it's on our website or some other means to be able to push content out to our community stakeholders and make sure everyone stays informed and connected. And I think ultimately, you know, we sit in a position to make sure that gets done, but don't necessarily need to be the doers of it all, if that makes sense.
Did anybody else, else any of any comments?
So can I just summarize real quick? So if we, so have we decided that we want to be a link between, I want to use your words, administrators and that our goal would be to push information out to, to make sure our stakeholders are informed, that that would be a sizable chunk? And so working on the communication plan is kind of where we want to focus at this point?
Yeah, figuring out how we, how we can support them and with the communication. Where, where would we fit into that little piece? You know, they're, obviously part of the administration is also going to be working on a plan to get some of that information out, but trying to figure out where we can plug into, help her with that communication.
Okay, and then is there interest in doing virtual coffees or, or not?
I don't have a problem with it. It might not be a bad idea, it all depends on how, the type of crowd you're going to get though too. And you gotta, you have to have, be real careful and make sure you have all your talking points and don't talk off the top.
May I just ask a question? You know, we've been putting out information to our families at least, those who are linked to our school district at least once a week. at least once a week. And so, you know, since since our building is closed, and so I guess I'm just, I am wondering, is there information that you think that our families have been seeking that they're not, that they haven't been getting yet? And I guess that's a question to the whole board at this point.
I mean, putting my family member hat on, I think the communications have been phenomenal and directed towards the hierarchy of needs that families are wondering about. And so I think the answer to that first question from my perspective is no. I think there's probably an opportunity for our fuller, like taxpayer community to understand how we're thinking about the current situation and the why behind, you know, some of what we're trying to do from a from a budgetary perspective. That that's my, that's that is my thought. Not not from a families as a stakeholder per se, Lynn, if that's helpful.
Yeah, that was helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, Christie, as usual, very well articulated, but I think, you know, there's going to be some tough decisions coming down the road, and it would be helpful if, you know, people were privy to the same kind of information that we are as far as the hardships on the revenue line we're going to have not too far from now. And the way to articulate that on our website, I'm not a hundred percent sure of, but I don't think it could hurt if we started to you know, raise raise our hand a little bit and say, you know, here's here's some things we're hearing about, you know, the various funding streams as it relates to, you know, like I like I referenced, some tough decisions coming not too far from now.
And you're thinking the way that that's aside from making our our meetings public and our documents, you know, through the board, through board meetings are are public. We have been creating and sending out board briefs of late. So you're thinking aside from that, something that people could just go to the website and find in a different way outside outside of board meetings.
I think in act, yeah, go ahead, Jason, sorry.
Let me just finish up by saying that I think that we kind of learned a lesson during the last round of negotiations that we were surprised that we didn't feel like we had been telling our story properly or in a way that it was being received. We were conducting our business in public transparently, but yet we're, I don't know, I'm not want to speak for everybody, but I felt a little blindsided by the sentiment by some. So I guess I just want to yeah, we're we're conducting these meetings in public. We're having a financial update every meeting we're having. But I'm not sure that that's the best way that these people, that most of the people in our community are getting their information. I don't know that I have the answers, but I I think I know that much is true.
And and I would agree with everything that's been said so far. So if I put my parent hat on, the communication is just an email shy of a manipulant. I mean, it's it's a wonderful amount of information that that comes to the families. And Lynn, quite honestly, I hear comments to that nature, you know, in in the community that that they appreciate the volume of outreach, that they feel like the school district is, you know, not a distant body somewhere that's operating in this remote land. And so as a parent, that's pretty incredible, given the situation. So I thank all of you for that. And the one thing that Jason just mentioned that circles back to what Christie Miller was presenting was the idea of the narrative, and it's a theme that I've raised multiple times in a variety of different conversations, going back to negotiations and and through. We 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 as a board, as a governing structure, have the responsibility to help participate in the narrative of the school district and what it means to the community of stakeholders. That comes out of, in my in my eyes, that comes out of two different, two different lanes, the the lane that we're connected to with the teachers and with the administration, and then the lane with the community members and all the different stakeholders. And so one of the things we also had been trying to do prior to that, given some of the conversations and debates around the Hager Electric situation, was the increase and betterment of communication between the district and the other taxing bodies. The the involvement that we should have in trying to to reciprocate some of those conversations where we tend to have them in silos. I don't think the COVID nineteen situation precludes us pursuing potentially divvying up, you know, attending maybe a meeting or two, seeing where everybody else is on their you know, journey through this whole thing and then and then trying to see how we can circle back to some of those common conversations that we had started to have before this all, you know, before this all went down. So those those are my two pieces. I think the communication is amazing. I I don't think I could even keep up with it, should I be in your position? And then I also think we have the opportunity to continue to act as a governing body to create that narrative that both Jason and Christie Miller and Christie Braden referred to in their comments. That that's that's where my thinking is centered around. Thank you.
I just don't know how the rubber meets the road on that. That's my problem is I, maybe it's a lack of imagination on my part or a lack of experience in that area, but I don't know what that.
Well, and I think, I mean, I think we were moving in that direction, and then we were suddenly halted, you know, by this, and now we have a whole new lens with which we have to view everything. So it it might be a matter of time before we get back into seeing what that might look like. But I I as 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 struggling and as as anxiety inducing a pandemic, this pandemic situation is, I think we have to keep that in our in our wheelhouse as well as we move forward.
So maybe one of the things that we do next is consider the communication that's gone out to one of our stakeholder groups, which is our families, has been excellent. I think everyone agrees with that. What can we use from that process that we can then as a board take responsibility for? And I add this as one more thing that Lynn, that you have to be responsible for, that any other administrator has to do, because I know your plates are full. But as a board, we can say, okay, what is the narrative that we're taking it? And how do we bring that narrative to our other stakeholder groups, specifically people who do not have children in the school system right now? Because they're paying taxes too, and if they're part of creating the solution and part of creating that narrative, that that I'm I think will decrease the backlash that we get when the levy meetings come around. So they know what their tax money is going to, and they've been a part of those investment discussions. That doesn't mean that they talk about instruction and they get to decide what we're teaching or when, but it it does say there is something valuable about making sure people understand how how valuable our school system is. And maybe I'm saying something different, but my my point is just how do we get to the other stakeholder groups that are not directly connected to the schools?
I think that I think that kind of comes down to where Jason is looking is that information's got to at least be on the website as a minimum. And then we have those other, we have those other avenues to push things out as in Twitter and Facebook. But we have a capital audience with our families because we have everybody's emails. We don't have everybody in the community's emails to be able to push that narrative out like we do to the families. So it would be a little harder to get that out there, other than blasting it out on our social media and making sure it's on our website.
And we already do that. So then if we have some in-person where we go to their meetings, or we, and we can do that now virtually, or we kind of our observers in the gatherings that they have, then we can go and listen and say, hey, the library has a sustainability plan. The village has a sustainability plan, or and it's not about the sustainability plan, it's just so that we're not duplicating our effort. And so then we can say in their public meeting, we have amazing, an amazing education system, and it's feeding we've provided seventeen, well, nineteen thousand meals to people. This is a really valuable public service. So if you can pay your taxes into installments, that's what it goes toward. Or something, whatever the message that we decide we want to share. Is. Okay, so if I know we have board briefs. Those are on our website. Are Stephen, you meant, you said something about divvying up? Something? Can you speak more to that? I don't know.
No, yeah, I was just, I think I was just rewinding myself about a year ago when we, at one point, I know there was some discussion about and that, again, this was part of the, when we were discussing the the abatement issue with the electric company about a better communication between all those taxing bodies. And so we, I, if I'm not mistaken, at one point, we had talked a little bit about maybe a rotation schedule, or maybe one month, one of us attend a board, a village board meeting, another month, somebody attend a library, so that there's a little bit of knowledge as to what what is happening with the other bodies. That that's what I meant by divvying up that that role. With the understanding, of course, that we find ourselves in a very unique situation now, and that might be a lot more difficult than it was when we discussed it. But that was still the idea that that I was just trying to get across as being something we might want to see in the future. Once this nasty virus is gone.
And you can already do that with the library because you're on the library.
Well, correct, that that is correct. So I, you know, we we just had a foundation meeting this week and we're, you know, planning on how you know, I mean, you know, one of the signature event was the mini golf at the library, and then that we are you know, you you can be fairly certain that that is not going to look that way next year, depending on what's coming down the road. But what can we do as a library to serve the community? And so that's one of the stakeholders that we would be able to give insight into, that I would be able to give insight into to the board. Right? Just by virtue of my service on that one. But I don't think I, I think I've been to maybe one village board meeting in my entire citizenship in Grayslake. I'd probably be better about that. So but I pay my water bill.
My mind, my mind is on social media and how we talked about
Yes.
That and I thought we we agreed the first step was going to be trying to surveil some other districts to see what they're doing. Twitter is my social media of choice, so I'm going to take the soft step of following some local school districts who are on Twitter. I am not on Facebook. Because I think that would be a a good place to start pushing something. We could be talking about, you know, hey, we're hearing this from the state about funding. We're hearing this from the county board about funding. We could put out tweets like that. So
Awesome.
I know we're not there yet. I mean, I I think the first step is to surveil some some of what other people are doing, but I'm myself to start doing that.
Okay.
Awesome.
And is that something? So I I think I'm going to start. What would be more valuable, village board meetings or county board meetings? Because I'd like to go to, I can't go to both, but I'd like to go to some of those. But I don't know which would be more helpful to all of us.
I wonder if it wouldn't be great to have a list of all these different bodies that we think we want to, you know, integrate with, maybe putting a list out of maybe the next three months worth of meetings in a sign-up sheet or something. I don't know.
Funny, you should mention that, Jason. We have a dashboard that will list all of the wonderful resources that are in our community. So I'll get to work on that, too.
Munk set spike.
Um, I also, oh, I lost my thought. Sorry. You sparked a thought that I had too, but I forgot what it was. Sorry.
All right. Well, do you guys want to, would we do this in board reports? Is that when we would share this out?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay, do you want village or do you want county? What would be more helpful for us?
I think county, only because that's where the action is happening in terms of much of our financial implications.
Okay, and you want me to listen through the lens of revenue and finances? That's I will happily do that. Sorry, Mary. I might have other questions for you.
Oh, I did have a quick question, which is, do we push out the board brief via social media? Or do we just publish them on the website?
I am not, I'm not positive the answer to that, but whatever the answer is today, it could be, we can change it for tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I follow the district and I haven't seen them, and I do think, you know, I do think it would be a great way to get that out there.
That's that's for sure.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. Because I do think the brief, I I like that. I think that's a really good, you know, it's like, instead of recreating the wheel, how do we just make sure that more people know about it, have access to it as well?
Do we know how many people are reading it? Do you get any data on that, Lynn?
I don't know.
Is that too much? Because you're you have to write that then, correct?
Um, actually, no, I'm happy to say the answer to that is no, I don't have to write that. Our flow-through for that is that Sue creates the minutes from this meeting. And, you know, I kind of confirm those minutes, and then all of that goes to Leslie. And then Leslie convinces it down to the board briefs, and then I review the board briefs. So that's how that works.
Okay. So do you have, what do you think about reaching out to other other boards? Like, how does that impact you?
I don't think it does.
What's, okay. So then it would just be a matter of what information do we push out, which we could talk about it next time, but but right now, we're just kind of listening. Is that what we're agreeing to do and then coming back with board reports? Jason here?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Fantastic.
All right. All right, so we are on new business, school buildings, schools, school fees.
Yeah, so that's my topic. I just want to hit on something that Lynn said earlier in light of equity and inclusion and how this becomes a conversation in everything that we're talking about. School fees has become one of those conversations of how do we ensure that we're being inclusive and equitable to all of our families in our district? Just to give you some history, I know in February, February nineteenth board meeting, student fees were approved for the school year, and those fees had a built-in discounted rate effective June, as long as you paid those fees by June eighth. And the point was made in a recent cabinet meeting that with the schools currently being closed, parents who do not have credit cards, who do not have access online to register their students and make payments would therefore be financially penalized for not being able to go to a school and and register their students by paying cash or paying check in person. So what I will like to bring at the next board meeting, pending on discussion tonight, is a change of that due date from June eighth to July fifteenth. Why July fifteenth? July fifteenth is essentially giving us enough time to still pending when schools reopen, pending other information that might happen, as long as there's administrators in the building and administrative assistants in the building to handle registration. If we receive fees by July fifteenth, that allows us to still print packet material and and prepare for a possible central registration in August without noting that their fees were paid. I do want to mention that as I bring this to the next board meeting, obviously, this is all based upon information about schools being open and available and administrative staffs being at the school sites to collect cash payments and check payments. But I wanted to get action going on it sooner rather than later, before the deadline, to put some parents and guardians at ease. And you'll have some chance later on, if if for whatever reason, the buildings remain closed through the summer, and we don't have a central registration event in light of obviously guidance from the governor, we can change these student fees again. But for now, I wanted to present to you the possibility and get some feedback from a board on changing the due date from June eighth to July fifteenth.
I'm okay with that.
I think it's a great
Yeah.
I think it's really, I'm really glad you thought of it, John. I would love to hear more, but really appreciate that that perspective.
Yeah, me too. And is there any downside to it? It doesn't, it seems very elegant solution to what's going on with uncertainties. So thank you for that. But is there a downside?
The only downside, I would say, is that we might not The only downside I would say is that we might not collect as many fees. Right now, about forty percent of our parents pay their fees by the deadline. So we wouldn't receive forty percent of those fees by June eighth, we'd receive forty percent of those fees by July fifteenth. But just that's, I mean, student fees are such a small portion of our overall revenues. I don't think that's going to have any major financial impact to the district. So I, to be honest with you, I don't see a downside to doing this. That's part of the reason why I was bringing it as well as this is something that I think that we can do that'll help the community.
Okay.
I just want to add one potential downside, just so people are aware, but I don't think it inhibits us from, from doing this, which is simply that in, in some people, many parents might, I think, um, registration and school fees are linked together. So we may have families who haven't registered yet, who are going to say, oh, I, we can wait even longer to register. I will share with you, which is, which is difficulty for us as we're making our plans. That's stated, I've already reached out to our principals to find out where we are with registration. We're already behind in registration because families are, you know, they have such a wide range of concerns about what's going to happen in the fall. So I don't know if this is going to make a difference in that problem, but I wanted to be aware of the problem. I am definitely in support of John's idea.
We'll bring that to the board next meeting.
We have a full plan already proposed. I just wanted to bring it so it wasn't a surprise next time.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
All right, so we'll look at topics for future agenda items.
Okay, I do have a few. Um, so we, we'll do the school fees. Right? We'll have um, a, a resolution, resolution to establish the fiscal year and authorize superintendent designate to create a budget. That one um, is potentially not one that you're used to having, but is common and was proposed by Mary. Mary, do you want to share any information about that? It's kind of self-explanatory. Well, while she's looking, am I correct that that's not one you're used to seeing?
I don't recall that in the past.
Okay.
Yeah. So traditionally, the board policy related to establishment of the budget and the protocol specified by Illinois School Code that annually, the board needs to approve by resolution or authorize the fiscal year. It seems somewhat obvious. Um, the fiscal year is July first to June thirtieth, but uh, the Illinois School Code does require that the board formally authorize the fiscal year each and every year by resolution. It's also common at that time to designate this, um, authorize an individual to prepare the budget for the upcoming fiscal year and its superintendent or designate um, to prepare the budget. So it's, it's a very standard resolution, uh, probably won't trigger conversation. At that time, I would like to present what I call the budget calendar. And this is basically the roadmap that says, how do we get from A to Z by September thirtieth? And um, so it specifies the, the legal requirements to establish the budget and the required timelines. And then the conversation elements can be what's happening at the district office um, to get that done. So our district office away from the office, our district office at home. So, yeah.
So the, I think both of, tell me if you agree that both of those would be action items, that resolution and school fees would be action items, correct? Okay. And then we'd have um, the higher up, uh, new tech directory, hope. And so that would be an action item as well. Um, and then I have unfinished business, the ongoing um, cash flow update. Right? That you're looking for. Um, I'll begin the process of doing opening up teams update. Um, at that time, I'm, I'm going to tell you, um, now, I'm not positive that I'll be able to provide you with um, a memo by the end of the week, you know, for you to look at ahead of time. I will if I can, but I may be unable to do that just based on the work of those teams. So, so we'll see, but I'll certainly be able to provide it at the meeting. And then um, so will there be a, is, is the continued discussion of community engagement visioning, is that a um, an unfinished business item also? For ongoing discussion?
I would plan on doing a board report on what I'm seeing other boards doing on social media, particularly Twitter, since I'm not on Facebook.
I mean, I'll give an update on what I talked about too. So, but that would be a board report.
Yeah, I think I'll do, I think at this point we're just listening, so we can communicate that via board report.
Okay. All right, that's great. Um, okay, that's what I have for the next meeting. Does anyone have anything else?
There may be a chance that we would um, be bringing a um, curriculum suggestion about resources for our algebra students. Um, we're in the process of finalizing something. It's for a very small number of students, so that may be um, a necessary thing.
Would that be new business then, Paul?
I, I don't know where that goes. Um.
It would be, it would be a, a small adoption, is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess it's a question for the board. Do you want to have that as a, as a new business item at the next board meeting and then you vote on it at the following one? Or are you comfortable doing it as an action item at the next board meeting, having Paul talk about it? And then if you're not comfortable yet, it could be tabled and brought back the following month.
It doesn't rise to the amount that's required for board approval. It's just a consent thing, right? Or I mean, an advise, advisory presentation?
We always want the board to know if we're buying resources for all of our, for students. And so this is really meant for a relatively small number of students who um, are in advanced math class. Um, and we've been looking at algebra resources um, for that.
So it sounds like it would not have to be an action item at all, right? Just discussion.
Um, I think the board approves the adoption or the purchase, but sorry, I didn't bring this up before.
I think our policy talks about some dollar limit that requires the approval of the board, but are you saying in practice, it's been that any curriculum has been approved by the board?
Typically, we've come and brought you information whenever we've um, looked at a new um, resource, yes.
I guess we'll just have a discussion next week or next time and then vote the following. There's no, is there a rush to that? No? Well, let's do that. Let's just put it on our new business and then a discussion item and then we can move it forward to the next week. Or even next, or the next time, just say, we, we just give you consent. We do that too.
Looking out? All right.
Okay, uh, was there any public comments, Mark? No, okay. Uh, I got that from Chris. Uh, all right, so next, we do need a closed session meeting uh, to discuss uh, employment and compensation. So uh, I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Someone's second.
Okay, we'll call.
Oh, so you're muted.
Still, you're muted.
Sorry. McCroy?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Regan?
Aye.
Okay, uh, I don't anticipate coming back out into open session because we won't be making any uh, votes or anything, so anybody who wants to leave, model what you need.
Yeah, we have a new, another link.
Right, yes. So for board members, we have another link in your email for you to click on.
Take care, everybody.
You too.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.